Our public hearings, I'll call on the county manager to explain the board of commissioners procedures for a public hearing.
The approval of the agenda, sir?
Did I not approve that?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, may I make just one note, please? Under the public hearings, we're not going to change the order, but item 3A under public hearings, case 1706 is now a contested case, and we have speakers signed up. And then, item 3C, which is case P-1705, is now uncontested.
Uncontested.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, item three are our public hearings, and we'll begin with case P-1706. Mr. Lloyd.
If you would give us the procedures.
Yes, sir. I believe that each speaker is limited to a maximum of three minutes until a total ten-minute time limit is reached. No time can be yielded unless there's approval from the speaker for the time to be yielded.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
Yes, sir. This is a reserving request. It was originally from A-1 to R-30. The petitioner accepted the planning board, their recommendation of R-40. The subject property is shown in the hatch pattern. It's a little over forty-three acres, located to the south of Kennedy Pond Road. Current zoning in the area consists mostly of A-1 agricultural, some R-40A residential, and C-D conservancy district. Current land use in the area, single-family housing shown in yellow, with SW designating single-wide and DW designating double-wide. Area view of the subject property, hydrolic soils. It will be well and septic.
Septic.
Some hundred-year flood, which follows the C-D line. There'll be a change in density. The A-1 allows eighteen units. The R-40, which the planning board recommended and the petitioner accepted, would allow forty lots or units. The C-D line should remain unchanged, and as I stated before, it'd be well and septic. So, the difference in the density, but now the planning board also considered the difference in uses allowed. The A-1 allows an amalgam of uses, including single and double-eyed manufactured homes. The R-40 allows only stick-built homes and not near the amount of uses that the A-1 does allow. So, with that, the planning board did recommend approval of the R-40.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have two speakers in favor, one speaker in opposition. Our first speaker in favor is Mr. Charlie Gardner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Vice Chairman, this team of commissioners and staff, commissioner's staff and planning staff. My name is Charlie Gardner. First and foremost, I'm Mr. Gardner's son, the property owner, but I'm also his attorney and represent him from time to time on these matters. And I'd like to speak to you about our request to rezone approximately forty-three acres in Graves Creek off of Kennedy Pond Road. My father purchased this property in November of 2016. To our knowledge, the former owner had planned to lease the property to a company that would install a solar farm operation. He even recorded a development plat for that, but I don't believe that worked out. So, instead of solar panels, we would like to see high-quality residential construction be developed on that parcel of land. As Mr. Lloyd stated, the agenda printed stated that we initially saw it in R-30 rezoning, but after consultation with the planning staff, the R-40, I think, meets that area's needs, our desires for the property, and the R-40 is perfect. The R-40 also matches the 2030 land use plan that was adopted by Cumberland County for that area. That means we won't be able to get as many lots compared to R-30, but again, the R-40 matches the land use plan, and we're very comfortable with that. It would also retain the conservancy district, as Mr. Lloyd pointed out, that it shouldn't change that line much at all. If granted R-40 zoning, our plan is to install one singular entrance into the proposed neighborhood off of Kennedy Pond Road, meaning that all access to individual lots will be served internally and not off the existing Kennedy Pond Road nor Sim-Kennedy Road. We've talked with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Highways Division, and we and the Highway Division both agree that providing access from within the subdivision is a much safer alternative to developing lots that would face Kennedy Pond Road. This will, should eliminate the need for residents to back their vehicle into Kennedy Pond Road. The internal access should also prevent children and pets from wandering from their respective front yards into Kennedy Pond Road. If it's all served internally, all the front yards would face within the subdivision. In addition to providing access internally, we also plan to leave a wooded buffer on the perimeter of the tract. That way, we think it'll be more aesthetically pleasing to the current property owners in the area, but also to, it'll give the sense of seclusion and privacy enjoyed by that area's current residents. We have not committed any of the proposed lots to any prospective builder. However, we intend on attracting builders who are interested in building detached, single-family dwellings with a fair market value in the range of $250,000 up to $325,000 or more if the market should dictate. Above all else, we want the board of residents to know that we plan on maintaining, if not outright improving, the high regard in which this community is already held. We would not develop anything in that area that my father and I would not call home ourselves. Thank you for your attention in this matter, and we request that any remaining time in the public hearing area be reserved for rebuttal. Thank you very much.
Our second speaker in favor is Mr. Charles T. Gardner.
Thank you, county commissioners and staff and guests as well. As my son said, we're not going to put no junk down there. It's going to be good property. It is fitting, I think, with the neighborhood that is emerging in the Graves Creek areas. A lot of people want to live there. It will certainly increase the tax base for the county because we'll put nice houses there. Only thing, if anyone is opposed to it, I'm sorry, but growth is happening, and that's natural in anywhere, in most communities, thank goodness in Cumberland County. And we've talked to several of the property owners, and most of which have agreed that this would be fitting for that neighborhood. I thank you for your time, and we'll have the rebuttal time if we need it, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Our first speaker in opposition is Mr. Melvin Wilkins.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is Melvin Wilkins. I live at 1277 Kennedy Pond Road. I retired from the military about a year ago, year and a half ago, and my goal was to find somewhere that I could get away from the hustle and bustle. So, I went, I went out to the most country place you could possibly find on the map here, want nothing but, but the wood area when we moved in. I wanted to get away from everything. So, I have other retirees here, my neighbors, they retired too, and we were just looking for a quiet place. Now, I understand expansion will happen, but you shouldn't be intrusive, and for you to put forty, forty homes on that little small country road, it's not within the harmony of the community. We're a small community. We know each other on Sim-Kennedy and Kennedy Pond Road. To put forty houses, you're building another community in a community, and that should not be allowed to do. It has been A-1 for the rezoning, just for you could put more houses on that small road. For everybody who already purchased a home there, you messing up our quality of life, and that's just not fair, so. And then also, the second part, he said it's going to be septic tanks. Now, I don't know how the water table is with the wells that we have now. Now, you're going to add additional forty wells in the area, in that little small area? How much water is in the ground? I don't know. But that's one thing that should, should be looked at and make sure that everybody in that community understands that ten years down the road, we're not going to run out of water because on this day, we decide to let forty new homes go in this area. So, that's all I have to say, and I appreciate you all hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins.
There are no further speakers?
There are no further speakers. I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, Mr. Keith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lloyd, I heard the builder mention that there is an intention to keep the C-D where that line is coming down. Is that, is that your understanding?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Regardless if he does that, don't we take the entire plat into consideration and treat it as if it was all R-40 so he could just really condense more homes into the area that's not in the conservation district?
Yes. Yes, sir. Use it toward density.
And was it your math that showed on, was it forty-some acres, forty-three acres, that it would be forty, forty lots? Is that, is that? I heard forty lots.
Yes.
I didn't hear you say it, but is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and I noticed that there's only one R-40 in that area, but the growth plan apparently states that, I heard from someone that the growth plan shows.
Rural.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Faircloth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lloyd, as the property is currently zoned, would it not be possible for, if, if, if the petitions were not successful, for them to put a mobile home park or a future owner to put a mobile home park on this property as it exists?
They could put a mobile home subdivision.
Subdivision.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Still be what, one acre, no, be two acre lots, wouldn't it?
On A-1, two acres, yes, sir.
But it could be a mobile home subdivision. Okay. Thank you.
And I would just, and I heard Mr. Gardner talk about, and I do appreciate not having the houses facing Kennedy Pond Road for the kids, for the, to back out in that, but it just gives me, and I would hope that they could look at this, after this hurricane, the one-way-in, one-way-out just is not, it just causes more problems in this community. We've seen it throughout. We've seen it up in Kings Grant. We've seen it out in the western part of the county. We can't require them to do that, but I would hope that they would think about a second, somewhat access to be able to get out of that property if, if it's rezoned. The one-way-in, one-way-out just gives me some concern. Any other commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner, council.
Yes. Mr. Lloyd, I noticed, and that always is what I look at, the, the planning staff and the planning board agreed with this recommendation.
Yes, ma'am, the R-40 recommendation.
The R-40 recommendation. I know that we have concerns, Mr. Lloyd. Did you have opposition at the planning board?
Not on this case. I was over here that night.
I know that we've all heard the reasons, and the reasons are basically the same. I moved in my house, too, thinking that there wouldn't be anything else on that street, and then some more houses have been built. Unfortunately, that's what happens.
Yes, ma'am.
And I feel bad about that. But I want to, I'm ready to make a motion to move that, that R-40 and C-D would be consistent and reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff and the planning board.
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Faircloth, Evans, Adams, Council Lancaster, and Boose voting in opposition. Commissioner Keith.
All right. My second motion is, I don't know what my second motion is. Would you help me with my second motion, please?
Immediately, the motion is ready. Page three, lieutenant.
It says, I guess that's the only motion.
No, two. The motion for Kate is to move to deny the rezonement of R-30 and approve.
Approve R-40 and C-D conservancy for the SFHA.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor. That vote is unanimous. The next case is case P-17-04.
Yes, ma'am. The subject property is a little under three acres, 2.8 acres, shown in the hatch pattern along fronting Merkison Road, south of the 295 outer loop. Current zoning in the area consists of CP along Merkison Road, CP planned commercial, and there is some C-3 within Shaw Heights there, and C-3, and R-6A residential, which does allow manufactured home parks, the R-6A. Current land use shows single-family housing in yellow, commercial in red, and multifamily housing in brown. Area view of the subject property, it will be served by septic.
Can you go back?
Water is shown there in the blue. Sewer is about nineteen-hundred feet away. In our ordinance, we require the extension of sewer if it's within three-hundred feet. In this case, it's six times further than that, so we, by ordinance, are not requiring Of course, we'll have PWC water. I believe in this particular area, it would take a lift station to get sewer to the subject property, but I'll let the petitioner explain that. So, the planning staff originally recommended approval of CP, but at the planning board meeting, there was some opposition to some of the uses, specifically bars and adult entertainment that are allowed in CP. And so, the planning board, as well as the staff, because it is a more restrictive use, recommended C-2P, which doesn't have those noxious uses in there. I believe the petitioner is fine with that, but again, we'll let him do the talking. But the planning board recommended C-2P for this parcel.
Any questions for Mr. Lloyd at this point? If not, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have one speaker in favor, Mr. Ralph Huff.
Hang on, y'all.
I feel you. I can feel you.
Ralph Huff, 606 Forest Lake Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. You know, I've been coming to these things for about thirty years, and every time I've ever come, I hoped I won. This time, I really don't care. A friend of mine owns the property that is CP adjacent to this, and he's been trying to buy this property for several years, and the seller wouldn't sell it. Recently, the seller needed money. He called my friend, "Will you buy this?" The guy doesn't have the money. He called me. He asked me to buy it. I wrote out there, and I said to myself, "Self, this is a good piece of property. It's the first thing off of 295. It would be well-suited for a sheets. It would be well-suited for a hotel." And I agreed to buy it conditional upon it getting rezoned. I'm totally fine with the new zoning that you're, you're suggesting because none of those uses, the bar or the adult entertainment, none of that is anything we would have considered. In my deliberation on this, I had to make sure that the piece of property was big enough to serve certain uses that could be served with a septic tank because the cost to bring in sewer here is $200,000 to bring it, plus $400,000 for a lift station, which is $600,000. If this is, and if this is ultimately annexed into the city, and if PWC decides to bring the water and sewer to the site, I'll be glad to pay whatever the assessment is, but as Michael Boose's math a minute ago was, you don't buy a piece of property for one-quarter, and then you have to spend three-quarters on it before you can sell it for three-quarters. So, that's where we stand. I'm gonna, there are eleven very, very substandard Section 8 units on this piece of property. I've told the owner of the property that he could have, as long as he needed, to give those people time to move out. Once they were moved out and they were relocated, I would close on the property, raise the whole thing, clear it all, grass it and seed it so that the first thing you see when you get off of 295 on Merkison Road is a nice, clean piece of property. The other reason I'm buying this is where I'm putting my money where my mouth is about redevelopment and, and hopefully doing some, something to help the Merkison Road corridor and that, and that corridor for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
There are no further speakers.
There's no other speakers. I will close the public hearing and commissioners. Mr. Keith.
Yeah, real quick. Mr. Lloyd, Mr. Huff had mentioned a convenience store with this zoning. Would that be sufficient?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The tanks are not a, not a problem?
Yes, sir.
Although without sewer, that would probably would not work then, right?
A convenience store?
Well, a sheet.
Small business.
Well, you know, to, to the potential purchaser, I realize you may not be very excited about it, but as a student at Pine Forest High School in 1979, I haven't seen a lot of action on Shaw Heights, and I'm excited about it. I'm excited to see that Shaw Heights gets what they, gets what they deserve with, with the type of environment that they have back there, and it'll really up their game out there. I think it will give services to the people that live there now, and I think it's a good thing for our, our community in total, so that, for that.
Well, before you make a motion, I got another commissioner, Commissioner Faircloth.
I'll, if you don't make a motion, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend that the board approve the request. It's consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan designed in 2030 growth plan vision, which calls for urban development and location, and the request generally is consistent with the Shaw Heights land use plan and calls for a commercial and open space. The approval of the rezoning is reasonable in the public interest because the district requested is the subject property generally meets and exceeds the location criteria that is adopted land use policies plan, and that public water required, PWC water, is available, should have, and has the minimum direct access to the Collector Street, NC Highway 210. Is a principal arterial street, may be co-located with light industry, industrial, manufacturing uses, and must be located on a sufficient site that provides adequate area for buffering, screening, landscaping. Geez, this is.
I don't know which motion you would be.
Which motion?
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
I'm making the motion we approve.
I would, and I'm torn. I would tell you, I'm truly torn. You heard me just talk about hopefully the annexation or at least this going into the, to the city, and I think we just need to have, make sure that when we do this, that this thing is planned out, and it's not just, you know, the lack of sewer just, we, you know, I talk about water and sewer all over this county with that, but, so that's what gives me some concern on this. But if there's no other comments, all those in favor of the motion?
Unanimous.
Mr. Keith.
Oh, I can do the second one. This one right here. Moving to approve the reserving for the CP planned commercial district.
Is it CP or C-2P?
C-2P.
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 Yes.
C-2P.
C-2P. Plan commercial district.
You listening to Mr. Faircloth down there?
Yeah, I'm listening to him. Sometimes age doesn't bring wisdom.
Is there a second?
Yes, I seconded.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Later.
Madam Manager.
The next case is an uncontested case, case P-1705.
Yes, there's no opposition to this. This is a requested rezoning from A-1 and C-D to A-1, and the adjustment of the C-D line. It won't allow any more units. It's merely an adjustment to the conservancy district line, which all the land can be used towards density, so there is no opposition to planning board recommended approval.
Any question, Mr. Lloyd? If not, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers.
With no speakers, I will close the public hearing and call on Commissioner Faircloth.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with the 2030 growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reserving in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendation of the planning staff.
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Mr. Faircloth.
Yes, I move that we approve the rezoning for A-1 agricultural, except that area located when the, within the SFHA should be rezoned to C-D conservative.
Second.
Conservatory, conservancy district.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
The next public hearings are our minimum housing code enforcement cases. The first case is minimum housing 1467, 2016. Mr. Walters.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. This first case is located at 1230 Shaw Road. It's a dilapidated structure with some debris around the structure. As I understand it, the property owner has made some progress in removing the debris around. The structure has been vandalized. The electrical and the plumbing has been removed from the structure. And we're here seeking an order for demolition.
Any questions of Mr. Walters by the commissioners? If not, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have one speaker in opposition. I would call Ms. Mary L. Cockrell.
Mr. Walters, can you pull that down for her, please?
Ms. Cockrell. Thank you for letting me speak.
Ms. Cockrell, if you would put your left hand on the bidle and raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
The first of the year, when I got the, I guess, got the first letter, my oldest sister got word that her, her cancer was terminal, and she passed away the first of June, and she was buried on June the eighth. At that time, my son, who was helping me with rental property, was sick and in the hospital. He had pneumonia, plus he had infection in his leg and had to have his leg operated on. His leg healed on the outside, did not heal on the inside, so he had to go back into the hospital and was on six weeks of antibiotics. Then I, I was working, went down to help clean up the yard, and that, and I don't know why I didn't comprehend that I was supposed to work on the inside, but I thought just we were supposed to clean the outside. The first time we went down there, I had helpers, and they were hauling stuff away, and I decided I'd help break, and I got sick and went and sit down, and I passed out, I guess, and they called an ambulance, and I spent the night in the hospital. Then my son passed away October the first, and in December, I, from all the stress, I went back in the hospital. So, for some reason, I did not comprehend that I had to work on the inside, and I guess one reason, I really thought that the city of Fayetteville and Fort Bragg was going to buy up all Shaw Heights. That came out in the paper, and I was hoping I might could sell all my rental property. But I called Mr. Hatcher on Thursday and told him we had the yards all cleaned up, and he said, and I asked him if he'd come out and inspect it, and he told me it was too late, that they had planned to probably demolish the, the house, and I was, I was in shock. I said, "Why?" And he, he told me that it was too late. So, I'm asking for, I did have somebody that wanted to buy the house. I got a card in the mail, said, "Buy as is. I don't know if I want to sell or fix up the inside because I don't know how much it'll cost, but I'd like time to find out exactly how much it would cost me in repair." cost, but I'd like time to find out exactly how much it would cost me in repairs or either decide to sell it as it is." So, if I could have some extra time, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Koppel.